Well, let's call the meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
For America.
For America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God. And justice for all.
For all. Thank you. First up on our agenda, we have some appointments, one for the Personnel Board, who is Janice Gallagher. Is she available?
She had a last minute conflict that came up and apologizes for not being in attendance.
So has everybody had a chance to read the application?
Yes.
Yes.
Both of them.
Okay, and we're good with the Personnel Board application?
Yes, I am.
I am, yep. No questions.
Let's take a motion to appoint Janice Gallagher to the Personnel Board.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Janice Gallagher to the Personnel Board.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Action.
Thank you.
Second, we have an application from Lynn Hagerty to the Capitol Budget Committee. Is Lynn available?
Don't see her online.
Have we read the application? Both?
I have.
I have.
Any questions or concerns?
None.
None.
Take a motion to appoint Lynn Hagerty to the Capitol Budget Committee.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint Lynn Hagerty to the Capitol Budget Committee.
I second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous action. We have next a dog nuisance hearing. Is the Animal Control Officer there?
Yeah.
Can you give us a rundown?
I think I'll go here.
Yeah, yeah, please, yep.
I always want to be shown the camera so she can see me. So in April, we bought a seven-foot barn. The lady was bit by a dog. Dogs were running loose. Oh, Leona called me over. Was getting out of dinner for a break, got a plan to provide two weeks. Did provide with the greatest certificate and a person watching the dogs. Quarantining the dog, the lady watching the dogs. When he came back two weeks after, he contacted them, I gave him a ticket. All dogs unleashed, provided unlicensed. He paid the tickets and licensed the dogs. Give how short it's version, let's say the whole version. And then October, then General Shedd got loose, Rocky. Did a lady from Pine, up Pine Street, got there. There was a police bomb in, get the dog chased back into the backyard. They, medical treatment, medical treatment, I gave him a ticket. And quarantined the dog for another 10 days on it. At that point, I went to the Selectmen's office to get a hearing. And basically, we're at, we're at, both people getting medical treatment from the town EMS.
When was the second dog bite?
October 9th.
And you filed the paperwork with the office?
Yeah, I gave him paperwork for that. Well, I went first to the town management. It was kind of November, November's meeting was booked, so we're looking for December 5th. But I gave the paperwork November 6th. Somehow complications, and we are 2/9/19.
Okay, are there any questions of the other two members?
I don't have any questions. I read through all the paperwork and the letters that were sent and the police reports and the detective note, detectives' notes. So I'm familiar with, I have all the information I need.
I have the information I need as well. I've, this provided to us, I've read it. She only probably, only. I think the, is that, I think someone who was bit is in the room?
Yeah, the first lady was bitten in the room, I don't know if she wants to make a statement. We tried to put the statement, I'm hoping that you read it for you then.
I was, yes. Did you see the written statement?
Not in the packet?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't.
Sure, I'm sure. Is your, you want to read it?
I don't think it will affect anything, but I definitely will, and want you going to read it right now.
Is the owner of the dog available?
Yes. Yep. So she, she can see who it's on.
And you give us an update on what your intentions are doing?
So I've been talking to Mike about what is the next step for me here. And to be honest with you, I have a five-foot fence around the whole yard. And we find out she been jumped on top of the bulkhead door. And for us to know where the fence, and we end up to idea to raise the fence up to the ceiling.
So it's a seven foot, it's gonna be a seven-foot chain link fence, which no special permits here, the building, I'll check on that. We're looking to secure the doors so the kids can't open the doors. But then, with so kind of concrete in the ground, so the dog can't dig underneath it. And, you know, make sure it stays in the backyard, spirits.
Two, two feet down is what the arm is.
Yeah, two feet, yeah. By how wide?
Yeah.
How, how wide?
How wide?
How wide? Thick, how thick?
For the fence?
Concrete, the concrete.
Oh, I don't think this is.
Didn't say, no.
Doesn't say con, it doesn't even say it has to be concrete, it just needs to be, well, seven remedies.
Concrete process.
With sides not less than two feet embedded into the ground, if it doesn't have a floor. If the enclosure has no floor, the sides need to be embedded two feet into the ground. But that's only if, that's only the locked pen with a pop on. So that's what we have to figure out is what we want to do to resolve it, right? So there's seven options that we have from state law.
Okay, Laura, any questions?
Um, no, I, you know, I, I don't know who you work with to determine that the dog won't dig under. I mean, I know some dogs dig more than others.
Well, and that's just one of seven.
That's one of seven options.
The other option is you can have them humanely restrained to an inanimate object. Is, am I interpreting that right? Yes, just not with a chain. But you can have the dog humanely restrained or otherwise tied to an inanimate object like a tree, a post, or a building. Or you can confine the dog to the premise, either indoors only or outdoors, but properly sheltered. The properly, the properly sheltered would require a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area with a secure reef. And if there's no floor, sides not less than two feet embedded into the ground. So that's another option.
So that's underneath the fence. Yeah, this is on the dog, they can't be.
What would be the recommendation from you, Mr. Moran?
Definitely the locked doors, the seven-foot fence, and definitely concrete down, so the dog can't dig underneath it.
And is the board good with that?
Can I ask the fence, where the fenced in area that's gonna be, because from reading this, it looks like, what triggers the dogs are people walking by. So if you fence behind your, your house, can you see it from the sides? For example, I have a pool and I put, it's chain link and I put security slots in, so you can't see through it.
I offer that to Mike too. And we, I don't know whose.
Oh, yeah, we didn't get into that part, because there's only one piece, one small piece.
I mean, I, you know, I don't know your layout, but I do it because my.
But I have one side of the driveway, it's actually fully closed fence, it's actually wood fence. I can do the same thing on another side, should be fully blocked on the street, street view, because you saw the street. Yeah, I've experienced.
That might help because.
Yeah, she won't jump, like literally, over the, the five-foot fence, but because we have fans right close to the bulkhead, she'll, she'll drop right on top of the door and jump.
Right, I mean, you know, I've had dogs and I've also been attacked by dogs before. And I know the dog that attacked me many years ago, their trigger was people going by. So I was just thinking, if they don't see it, they're more apt to, you know, out of sight, out of mind type of thing. If it's not an issue and you're willing to, I, I'd like to see that, the privacy put in.
So what's, what are the, so you're talking about creating a pen?
You know, that got your defense, it's fenced in by a five-foot fence. The dogs.
The entire, the entirety of the backyard?
Yeah, the backyard, there's a swan pool back there. The dogs take it harder, jump onto the fence, jump off.
So he goes up the bulkhead.
Replace the five-foot fence with a seven-foot fence?
Yeah.
Not gonna extend that.
We're gonna extend it up two more feet, so it can't jump over.
And then what are you gonna do with the concrete?
For it so the dog wouldn't dig under the fence.
But how are you gonna do that? What does that mean? Like dig a two-foot trench, dig a two-foot trench?
Trench all around the concrete, like we did a little lady on East Street Extension, that dog Merle.
How do you keep the dog from getting between, or you put the, you put the bottom of the fence into the concrete? Is that what you're doing?
No, we have a wire, we have a slot, it's one fence, we're gonna put it, here's the ground.
Chain link fence.
Trench all around, full problem, until it's all concrete.
Yeah.
It can be a four or two feet.
Put, put the fence on top of that, so?
Yeah, the fence already.
No, you, you put the fence in place, so if the edge of the table is the fence, you put the concrete here, so that when the dog digs, they would have to start four feet back. And most dogs aren't, usually they'll dig right at the fence. They, he'd have to be like a, a long tunnel.
No, I guess what I'm saying is that, what's gonna connect the fence to the top of the concrete, so the dog can't push out under?
She won't go under the fence without digging. It's because we've got this wire, it's a, like you said, the wire. If you should dig to the ground.
What is the wire going across that you're talking about? I don't know what a chain link fence.
A chain, why a chain link fence?
Right, and so, the pot, so you got, you got six feet between the posts, how far is between each post? Six or 10 feet?
Yeah, between six and eight, yeah.
So on the bottom of that fence, I could walk up to it, I could pull that fence up and walk underneath it. Why not?
So it's got, he's got this one tight.
Yeah.
You can't, is a, is a wire, is a, is a quarter of an inch wire going all the way back underneath that.
Because the law calls, there's a reason the law calls for it to be dug in, so that nothing can get through it, right? I understand a dog's not gonna dig four feet across, I, I totally get that. It's the space between the top of that concrete fence that I'm worried about.
They put a fence, you put a fence in the ground, it's stretching a lot. Wherever you put, if it ain't concrete, it's a rock.
I, I don't know, but I, I have chain link around my pool, with those, like metal bars around the bottom of it, that keep it from.
Is it actually a chain linked fence, the sturdy chain link or a long fence that's more?
It's a regular, a regular, a regular chain.
It's got black vinyl on it.
Okay.
Yeah. If I didn't see the dog go over the fence, I wouldn't believe it.
So what's the concrete again? Is it a pad that's wide or is it deep?
Goes along the fence line, that's what we're talking about.
The dimensions of the concrete, the dimensions of the concrete.
The way you said is two feet, it requires.
It's two feet deep, right.
Yeah.
But I was just asking how wide, if it said how wide, that's the thing.
It does not say that, because this implies a fence dug into the ground that you can't dig through. So it's like, that's why I'm asking, are you gonna do like that? You're not gonna, you said he's not gonna dig under it, so.
Yeah, he's gonna dig along the whole fence line, whole, whole thing.
So you're gonna dig, you're gonna dig a two-foot trench under the fence?
After, yeah, that's, that's what I think, yeah.
Yeah, so the lady did up East Street, I inspected it. That dog's rolling.
I mean, that's a, okay.
Well, that's a lot of, it's a lot of work, but we gotta, we gotta make sure this dog doesn't get out again.
We, yeah, that's my number one.
Because this dog's.
My concern is that it's not gonna get done, because it's so difficult to do. That's my concern.
Oh, I have to inspect it.
Okay, so you can inspect it.
I have to inspect this as it go along.
I mean, this dog can't get out.
Yeah.
Ever.
Yeah, because I told him, it happens again.
It can.
I take the dog, we have a special meeting right away, and then you gotta make termination of the dog at that point. That's why I'm trying to make sure.
I wanna make sure you understand that this dog cannot get out. Because at that point, it's not gonna be my responsibility, it's gonna be your responsibility.
Sure, I'd be, I'd be worried.
Okay, it's your dog. Yeah, I'm sure I would love your dog, but it's not, it's not okay to have a dog that bites people. Do you understand that, right? Okay.
Lauren, there's some, someone in the room just raised their hand and asked if they could speak. I didn't know if you could tell.
No, I can't tell. They can speak, yes.
Hi, my name's Sean, I live in the neighborhood as well. Before these two bites, so I read the reports, the dog has bit my dog. There's another time we're chasing my dog and my wife down the street. I was talking with Mike, Mike knows, you know, we, at first I was just trying to be neighborly, I put it in the mailbox, hey, you know, because we have a dog, we've always had dogs, I love dogs.
But there's dogs.
But then we were talking with other neighbors, they're like, oh yeah, you know, we've had a problem too, walking by. I think at the beginning, he just had electric fence. We walked by that dog for months.
That's what I mean.
And my, my wife.
Not letting it go. Not, she, you're a shepherd. This one's, this one's a brand new, two years old.
That was my next question, I won't just, what happened to the other dog? She, I have to, she got a back problem.
Put it down, because I asked, that's the first thing I asked, but one usher on the papers from the vet, then he put the dog down on top. Because that's my dog, same dog.
That's what I know what happened to him, from early twenties, twenties.
Yeah.
Because that dog was back, it's scary, I think this dog, but she's, she.
And Ruby, I don't think that right now, I don't have any issue with, with people. I do have an issue before, when she was a baby, with like a bigger dog. Yeah, I'm not lying about that. But now after Mike, the first time Mike said, okay, you should bring her to Canelo, have her play with the different dogs, maybe.
Centralization.
So right, because she, she used to go work with me and stay on the truck with me full day. So it's only me around her all the time. And now I've got any issue with her, until I go out.
Yeah. And she gets mad when you're leaving, she knew you were going to ride for two weeks, she's like, wait a minute. Separation anxiety.
It seemed like when we're walking across, if they can see, if the dog can see you, it seems to give the dog, I don't know, it's a different dog, I said, I'm sure.
Been the one I talked to a couple times.
Yeah, I spoke to, yeah, I mean, like I said, I like dogs, I just wanted to let you know, bring it to your attention, so you know.
Thing.
I didn't realize it was a bit of a dog.
Yeah, I had a lot of trust in it, the first dog she had. It's got the first time venue, then you want to choose a, my, my older mother's the worst.
Yeah.
Yeah. Go. Yeah, one second, Maureen?
Yes.
Sorry, there's someone else in the room that would like to speak. I know it's hard just because you can't see, so I apologize for interrupting you. Do you wanna go or allow the person to speak?
No, allow the person to speak.
Oh, go ahead.
I guess the only thing I'd say about that is, previous dog bit other dogs, this dog bites humans, so.
Yeah, it's gotta be controlled, it's, it's, no. Yes, the dog can't get out, it's not an option for anybody. Because you don't, right, like, it's not good for the dog, it's not good for you, it's not good for the people that the dog is attacking, like, it's, it's not rocket science, right? Nobody, nobody wants any of this to be happening.
No, and that's why, like I said, I know a lot of times it's just a visual trigger. So if the, the dog can't see, we've got a seven-foot fence that's blocked, that may help.
So what happens in the interim? So I mean, I'm, I'm fine with the seven-foot chain link fence around the whole back of the property.
Well, she's already five foot now, but he's gotta keep an eye on it, you know, only gonna take an analysis, we're trying to hear it. Like I said.
No, I understand that.
It's gonna go up to seven.
I'm talking about the remedy, right? So we're, we're being clear about the remedy.
Do a close fence on another side of the, of the house, so we have no.
Yeah, so, so when you're walking by on the street, there's no vision, there's no visual. And, and you're going up to seven feet, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't know, unless I build one, but I don't know if I can get wood fence seven foot tall. Usually they come on six feet.
Six, alright, six or eight, and eight feet.
Yeah, eight, yeah. But I'll, I'll make the call, and you can't run it for seven, you can't go up seven feet without a permit, special permit. Yes, I, I checked the paperwork, we started discussing this paperwork, he said seven foot, it happens.
Can you buy it, and stuff?
You can get eight-four fence, it's special wood, yes.
Right, but can you get a seven foot, like, I don't want.
Uh, if you.
I try to make it.
If it's special wood, you can get anything, basically.
You can, okay.
Yeah, but a, a six, I know six-foot fence, if she won't jump on a glove, on the driveway and stuff.
Okay.
It is literally, it's fully blocked, so I have no space in there.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Well, I think the first thing we have to do is make a motion about the dangerousness of the dog. And then we make a motion about the mitigation of the dog. Is that right?
That's correct. And maybe it's sad that it didn't get on the agenda before this, because it could have been taken care of in a lot better weather, weather.
Make it dangerous.
Yeah, I have it here.
Oh, good.
Yeah. Uh, but I'm going to bring, I move based on the following facts. Educated or adjudicated at this public hearing, including but not limited to the fact that this dog has bitten on two prior occasions. And that the Animal Control Officer has held this, this, the board has held this hearing publicly, find that the dog complained of is a dangerous dog by reason of the items listed above, which is that the dog has, uh, without justification, attacked a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury. And behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or to a domestic or owned animal.
I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous action, second motion.
And then. Is there a particular way we need to motion this one?
I don't know. It's a danger, not. Uh, what? Remedy, dangerousness complaint.
I think we can make a motion for the, motion for the remedy of the dangerous dog, be a seven-foot chain link fence around the perimeter of the back of the property with a concrete pad at the base of it and shielding on the fence.
Yeah, privacy.
Privacy screening on the fence to keep the dog line of sight to the road.
You wanna go two feet down, how wide do you want it? That's, you gotta tell, how wide do you want the concrete? You want six inches or four?
I don't want concrete, I think it's a hell of a lot easier to get an eight-foot fence and bury it two feet in the ground. A chain link fence that's coated?
Bet you was gonna get it like any.
I can bring this up to, to, to the fair times, you know, how that work. Maybe sometimes, like, if we push the trailer down.
I'm just worried about, I'm just worried about a rotten, the dog picking at it, and that's what was all in it, he's getting out. Concrete, he will not, he won't dig that up, because his claws are gonna be nice and red and rough.
Look, I, I, I think it's, go ahead.
I would have to agree with the concrete. How wide do you want it to be?
I said minimum of six inches wide. Six inches.
Two feet deep, six inches wide?
Yeah. No.
You have to go pretty, pretty deep.
I'm not an engineer, all right? It rains, it pro, if I put a six-inch thick, if I put a six-inch block of concrete in the New England ground, in three years, that's gonna be powder.
That's all, the fence setting and concrete.
My foundation's concrete, but that's a different kind of concrete, it's a different kind of concrete than a guy.
Yeah, I was just worried about the motion, the dirt.
That's fine, I, I, there's, there's a majority, that's fine.
The process, the process, you know, engineer, and after you set a stall with the water and dry, that thing is already turned.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
That's fine.
So, uh, does that seem six inches wide concrete, does that? I wanna make sure that people are also comfortable with the remedy here. What we're trying to do is give people confidence and trust to make sure that this dog doesn't ever get out.
That's our goal, is this doesn't happen again.
Right, I had somebody two months ago, it didn't have to. So as long as, obviously even, everyone is aware that if this happens again, the dog's probably.
Yeah, so it is, and the dog has.
Yeah, so what happens again is, I seize the dog, I quarantine, I pay the bill, they're persevering. They made a decision what they wanna do with it. At that point, if it's euthanasia, I take it, they all pay the bill.
And he's, the dog has now officially been declared dangerous, and that's a legal term of art.
Because you moved the dog to another town, it's no problem, and so you moved to another town, and that's what you advise me to contact the town, the website, reduce lending. I have to contact Men, Men's Eight Clues, they'll take the responsibility for taking the dog. And they say no, that dog can't go in the town, stick your own hand.
Okay, so I, I'm fine with that. So a seven-foot fence, two feet of concrete underneath it, six inches wide, screening between the backyard and the sightline to the road. You good?
Convert it to the front fence to solid.
Yes.
Yeah, whatever the screen, yeah, it's some kind of, yeah.
That'd be great.
Is that?
That catwalk, which you can't see.
Right, Maureen, that.
Same way I have it, the driveway, you gotta be there.
Okay.
Yeah, the script, the script, the doors.
Yeah, they just, you're locked doors.
Yes, so the kids can't pop it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they brought them.
You have kids?
Two kids.
Make sure they don't unlock the door for the dog.
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, the two times happened, and when we were.
Yeah.
Bull.
Just, just make sure those gave, if, if another person gets bit, we're gonna have to euthanize the dog. So I'll just make it easier for me to say that now, so that it's on you instead of on me. That dog gets out and bites another person, that's the only other choice we have. There's no other thing you can do according to state law, so. You should make sure he has a copy of it, you should have a copy of this. This isn't us making random decisions alone, so. Okay. Uh, you, you can get a copy of this.
Yes, now, question about lights is, when I took over the job, nothing really had done, this was, every time going back, so I sat down, we talked about it. We own, first bite, second bite gets over, we're representing, there's no, no more, one to be buried. Third strike, the dog is out, it's all. That's what we give up.
Laura?
Excuse me?
Motion, Laura?
Yes, I am good with the motion, I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous action, thank you both for coming.
Thank you all for coming.
Yeah, very good. I can see this. Also, we're talking. Well, we figured, I don't think very much. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Good luck, take care of that little baby. You should read this, just, you have it already.
I say get it ready.
You have the packet, okay.
It's in the agenda.
Yeah, and the dog picked it up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I am sorry that you experienced that.
You won't catch me in that, maybe.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I know, I know.
Like you said, he already knows, if I pick it up this time, we do the 10-day quarantine, you guys have a special meeting. Like I said, he already knows. If I pick it up this time, we do the ten day quarantine, guys, for a special meeting. And it's over. Money is not the.
Here he said, well, it's time, it's a pain in the ass.
Yeah.
It's some of it. I don't know how you're gonna dig it.
So.
I could tell. Five hundred foot long trench.
Yeah.
Trenching machine, whatever.
Safety, public safety.
I I couldn't agree more. That's my that's my priority.
Alright, see you later.
These are tough ones, Mike, so thank you. These are the tough ones, so thank you.
Yeah, everybody's everybody's asking, that's my fifth one, but. Yeah, just come up with a solution, make everybody happy.
Right, nobody wants the dog, nobody wants to get any, nobody wants to have anybody scared or bit.
No.
And they definitely don't want it. Nobody wants a dog to get hurt, so.
I've been at the back gal with the dog.
Thank you.
Yeah, happy nine, Merry Christmas.
You too, Merry Christmas.
Okay, next is the town manager report.
Okay. Uh so uh why not at least give the board and the town update on a couple of things that are going on? Uh so first, uh last week attended a COA meeting where we talked about a number of of topics. One of which is the exercise room for anyone that recalls when the town was going through this. Uh the community center project, um an exercise room was contemplated. However, um there's been a couple couple issues. One, there's no visibility from any staffed area. Um uh and that um creates a problem as far as liability. So we're looking at installing cameras, we have waivers, town council's already reviewed. Um and we're we're preparing some procedures um and policies to then bring before the board. At meeting in January. Um at the same time, the amount of requests for use of the room as an exercise room really doesn't happen that often. And E S S department is um uh will move furniture out of the way so they can use that as. Or the exercise equipment out of the way so they can use it as additional program space. Um so um at COA meeting, there was discussion as far as maybe we were able to remove. Um there's three pieces of equipment there, maybe we can remove two of them, still keep the treadmill. Um but then have that as more flex space, so wanna have that as a general discussion for the board. Uh the building comes out of jurisdiction of the the board's lockman. Uh but given the um space constraints and program constraints. Uh staff is considering that we may need to go to more of a flexible model rather than voting. Then someone uses it half an hour, a couple of times. Um uh also, we have a code live date for Meals on Wheels, January second. Um for kinda just uh make sure everyone has access keys and all that stuff for that live date. Uh we're also in the process of uh starting the interview process for candidates for the E S S uh director on next week. Um other things that I've been working on is working with staff to review sort of uh. Identify department capital request. Uh these are are uh part of the capital plan, but also trying to identify if there's any. Uh sort of uh new things that are popping out there. Uh I have talked to the chair of C B C and we're looking at holding a meeting in January to talk with department heads and the full C B C committee. Uh to sort of go over uh capital budget items and uh make sure that. Uh that committee has enough time to uh provide recommendations for the town. We're also in the middle of uh F Y twenty five budget. Uh departments were given a due date of this Friday. Um some departments because of complexities and because they're responding to this most recent storm. They're focusing on the town, so of course I've given them a little bit of uh leeway to um to finish their budget since. Taking care of all the closed streets, um you know, all the calls that they've been getting takes a priority. Uh uh also been meeting with individual departments um to go over things as well as internal to town manager's office. Dealing with uh wages, expenses, personnel, insurance, I T and facilities. Uh last week attended personnel board meeting um where they uh reviewed the four job descriptions. Uh the assess director, social services coordinator, H R director and executive assistant. Um there was supportive of the changes that that we had reviewed uh at our previous workshop meeting. Um and I'll be preparing the final versions um so that they can see the final version uh at their January meeting. M V P, this is municipal uh vulnerability program. Uh this is a destination the town received in the fall of twenty twenty one. Basically to address um hazards within town, staff got together to brainstorm uh projects. And two were submitted for an expression of interest. Uh first is basically combining a bunch of smaller things into a larger uh Upton Center. Stormwater pedestrian park improvement project. Uh what's nice about the expression of interest is it basically gives an opportunity so to sort of float the concept, the individual elements to receive. Uh feedback from the state um so that we can then finalize the uh application. Applications are due beginning of June, uh so it'll give us a few months to pull things together. A second project, uh we're partnering uh through this uh E O I process. Uh with the town of Upton, looking at replacing fire uh suppressant foam. Our existing stock actually contains PFAS. The town has no PFAS. Um in any of the water samples, which we are a little unique, we don't wanna do anything to risk that. Towns are constructing multi-million dollar filtration systems to reduce and eliminate uh PFAS. Uh so uh working with our emergency management uh department and also with officials at Grafton. Uh we're looking at replacing those fire suppressant uh foam. Uh since for both communities adjacent to our zone twos, our aquifers, waters fly as well as environmentally sensitive areas. Um uh as this came together, it sort of highlighted that. Both Grafton and Upton uh should really petition our uh our legislative delegation saying, is there any other funding? Cause this is actually really important. We're not, if a fire happens tomorrow, we're putting it out.
Right.
Right.
I don't wanna wait for our M V P.
Yeah.
And say that gets through and then we're waiting six months for a war and then purchase. This is priority enough that we should be able to get some assistance for this, especially given Grafton, Upton. Here as well as in uh North Grafton, both having transloading facility. There's a reason there's, we're not going in with Milbury.
Right, um exactly, just makes more sense.
So we all experienced some more than others, the uh storm that came barreling through the northeast yesterday. Uh town hall, we just don't seem to catch a break sometimes. And we had major intrusion on this west elevation. Uh water came in uh not only through windows um that impacted our our veterans agent, the common administrative area. Town clerk's office, board of health. Uh but then also in the far back corner, the uh custodian, storage area, office area. Also had a significant amount of water coming in. Uh we have service probes here today. If you go downstairs, it sounds like a tornado has come through. That's all the fans and dehumidifiers going. Uh and we're also uh Dennis is coordinating with a exterior specialist to come and look. See if we can identify how water penetrated the building. We had very strong wind pushing things through. So things probably got up and over, uh but we need to try to figure out exactly what happened, especially because of the intrusion that was happening. At the foundation level and at back corner um of the building, so.
Yes, the million dollar question, did it affect the new flooring?
Yes. So that's primarily that section where it was put in, that's where it came out of Paul's area down the hollow. So that staff did notice it, we we tried to coordinate things off and address it. Um but you know, once water starts coming in, it's really hard to do anything but try to contain. Um and then lastly, just wanna recognize um all the work that our um staff did yesterday. And this is uh the Upton Police Fire and D B W departments. They put in significant long hours dealing with uh residents who had multiple issues. Multiple com- complaints, down trees, trying to get power restored. Um uh Dennis coordinating with Chief Bradley and Chief Marchionne to to not only support national grid. As they've restored wires, but as they've restored, cut down trees, the national grid's working on the wires, what D B W is then. Taking um the trees away and moving it to the side. Uh this is still gonna be a long week for us for cleanup. Um we still have some uh residents without power. We still left some sections of roads that are closed off. Um and um just wanna thank um all of our our dedicated employees for the the work and dedication. Um this has not been an easy two days and it's only been two days. It's it is gonna continue, so.
They appreciate it because it was something yesterday. Um how many applications did we have for E S S to run?
I can't say.
Thank you.
I was at least, I was pleased.
Good, good, so more than one.
Yes.
That works.
Any other questions?
No, none, other than to echo your gratitude to all the folks that have worked so hard the past few days. We know they always work hard, but this is when everybody says, wow, things are getting taken care of.
I know we have phenomenal people and especially this week because it's right before Christmas, I'm sure. You know, it took time away from their families yesterday if they were had any type of, you've got to honey do this or you've gotta do that. It's and it's gonna be all week and we truly appreciate the men and women of this town and the work they do.
Yes, we do, very much appreciated. Is that it for this portion of the meeting? There are no minutes, correct?
Correct.
Will we have those for the next meeting?
Uh yes, we should.
Very good, then we will go to the workshop portion of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.